I'll open the meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board. And we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Tenemos aparatos disponibles para interpretación simultánea en español si es que alguien los necesitará. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. We have headsets for the hearing impaired if they're needed, please let us know. And Dr. Cash, introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognition?
Thank you very much, Mr. Herron. Summer school is over. Did you guys know that? Our year-round schools are in session. And our schools on the traditional calendar, open doors on August 26th. We currently, our current enrollment, I was just going to go through the numbers so you have an idea at this time of year. Adams Elementary has 558 students. Cleveland, 352. Franklin, 596. Harding, 394. McKinley, 416. Monroe, 479. OAS, 140. Roosevelt, 613. Santa Barbara Community Academy, 299. Washington, 619. Galita Valley, 787. La Colina, 943. La Cumbra, 437. Santa Barbara Junior, 762. Alta Vista High School, 139. Alta Vista Junior High, 1. La Cuesta, 95. Dos Pueblos High School, 2,160. San Marcos High School, 2,220. Santa Barbara High School, 2,197. As we know, those numbers will probably be slightly different prior to the first day, but our enrollment is pretty impacted at some grade levels. And you'll note that all of our high schools are about the same size for the first time in a long time, which is really a good thing. Thursday is back-to-school night at Cleveland Elementary School. And our summer staff trainings are coming to an end this week. We had a great ELAC-DILAC presentation today. Mr. Herron was there. Put on by School Services of California. All of our principals and assistant principals attended. And our final big workshop takes place this next Thursday when we'll hold our Professional Learning Day at San Marcos High School. And we expect to have all of our teachers, counselors, and administrators there. There's a lot of things. Positive coaching, academic research for teachers, LCAP for teachers, dyslexia, adolescent drug trends, signs and symptoms, websites, apps, a lot of technology. There'll be a lot of things happening. Our Facilities Department has been hard at work this whole summer. And beginning on August 17th, we'll be moving library books, supplies, computers, and new furniture into the Adams Elementary School library. And as of today, that long-awaited project is 97 percent complete. We'll hold a ribbon-cutting in the weeks ahead when we know it's completely done. At Washington Elementary School, supplies and computers were moved to the new library already. New furniture arrives on August 17th, and it is 99 percent complete. We'll have a ribbon-cutting for the Washington Library Friday, September 4th, at 10:00 a.m. Tomorrow, Washington's paving lot project begins. Speed bumps will be done the next day, and after it sets, of course, we'll put the seal code on. And it'll be open the morning of August 25th, just in time for the start of school. Galita Valley Junior High School, the roofing project has had a significant start and is underway. And at Roosevelt, we are completing the heating, ventilation, and cooling project, as well as the roofing project on the old, old, original building on that campus, the administrative center and the cafeteria. And I'd really like to take a moment to thank the voters of our community for passing those bond measures Q and R, because those measures really improve the quality of our education. And the facilities improvements will positively impact generations of students. And finally, tomorrow in this room, we'll hold our annual meeting with the media at 9:30 a.m., and that will be followed by a Fix the Cap press conference at 10 o'clock. And Fix the Cap refers to Senate Bill 858, which prevents school districts from maintaining adequate budget reserves for rainy days. And that's been the subject of local news and state and national news as well. And we'll look forward to that. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you, Mr. Herron.
Questions of Dr. Cash? On the roofing you just mentioned, I received a letter in the last week asking if our roofing is being built in such a way that maybe in the future solar could be put on them. Is that taking place?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And the other thing, this morning at the DILAC, and I don't know the answer to this question, but has every principal and vice-principal received a copy of the DILAC report to the board last meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, I know it's available on the website, but I guess my question is, has a copy been delivered to each one?
I think it's been electronically delivered. I don't think a hard copy has been.
Yes, that's right.
So every principal, every assistant principal has?
Well, I don't know about assistant principals, but every principal.
Because assistants were there today. And I get the feeling from the hour that I sat that it would be beneficial if they knew exactly what DILAC has told us they want. Because when they go back to their sites, if they know what DILAC wants, they'd be much more apt to maybe fulfill some of those things.
We'll do so. We'll make sure they get it.
Thank you. Was that also your superintendent report?
Yes.
Okay. Board comments and correspondence? I know it's been a quiet month. Anybody? Monique?
Well, yeah, it's been a quiet month, but there's been a lot of community activities. I did see some of our students participate in this weekend's festivities in town. And I think we all got an invitation to a SHUMASH exhibit that will be happening August 20th. And I had a chance to talk to some folks about that as well. And they really want to get educators on board for that.
I was able to attend the Autism Beach Day. And again, about 40 children with autism and their parents, and about 100 volunteers giving these children rides on their surfboards. A group called the SEALs does it every year. And to see the love the parents have for their children and the love the SEALs have for those children, and to see them excited coming in on those surfboards for the first time in many cases, makes me realize totally that what the parents go through and how their lives are so different than mine, and the love is there, that's for sure. So hopefully, anything we can do as a school district to make sure those children, all children, get the education they need, I mean, to me, that's what we're here for. I've attended the Adelante Board Meeting. And they are going forward with two new portables. And it's quite an expensive project. And they're adding two new portables as long as they can get all the approvals of DSA in the district. And the district is being tremendously cooperative on that. And I appreciate that, Dr. Cash, because that does make them able to let the children that are there go on into the higher grades, because they need the portables for the higher grades. And they're doing a great job. They also approved 99.9 percent of the MOU and the facility agreement. There's still a couple of things, I guess, that we'll talk about later on tonight. And I was fortunate to attend the Partners Retreat, Partners in Education. And a lot of it come back to our district. I mean, we are the dominant recipient of their intern program, computers for families, their teacher support. The number of our teachers who take advantage of them providing support in the classroom is huge. And this whole idea of the digital divide, definition changing from equipment to the Internet, that's where the digital divide now is. Kids have a computer at home, but they can't access the Internet. And that is now another huge problem on the Internet divide. So it was a great recruit, a retreat, and they have big plans for helping our district, which I think is great. Okay. Announcement of closed sessions. In regards to Item B1, petition for readmission of expelled student, we took care of that in closed session, correct? No? Oh, that comes later. That comes later.
Yes.
Item B2, approval/denial of inter-district transfer appeals for 2015-16 school year. Number of inter-district transfer appeals were two. Motion made by Parker, seconded by Dr. Paz, to approve the appeal for cases 16-1 and 16-2 for two inter-district transfer appeals was passed unanimously. We had a conference with the real property negotiator for a lot of issues regarding, issues with the city and us on properties throughout our district. Just a general discussion. And in number B5, we just heard the information, and Dr. Cash will be taking care of that. Public comments, non-agenda items. Dr. Paz?
We have one speaker, Mr. Kenneth Locke. And you'll have three minutes, Mr. Locke.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I just went before the city, did a public comment today, and brought the sign flying off my bicycle that says "Got Pathetic." And the idea, the connection between pathetic and pathological, and the idea that the, for education, I think I've been pushing for some years, I've been speaking before you this committee, and the, been pushing interdisciplinary. And actually, it's really important that education actually reforms itself into the interdisciplinary. Because the problem with specialized, and kind of education is stuck on specialized, stuck on pathetic, sorry to say. And the nature of the evolution, the next generation, what I'm here to explain is in relation to the mind-body integration, as I probably mentioned before to you guys, mind-body exercise and the whole basis of what it means to be of sound mind and body. And I'm sorry to say that currently, education is not providing the children with the means for becoming of sound mind and sound body in relation to a mind-body exercise. And actually, I've been providing the information in relation to how tennis represents itself as a mind-body exercise, a complete knowledge, integrated knowledge, complete and integrated exercise, ambidextrous. I go down to the municipal courts, I continually develop myself holistically, because I'm going to represent the standard for the next generation of tennis teachers, so that, and raise the kids up so they're not pathetic. Right now, the teachers right now in relation to tennis, as well as, I'm sorry to say, in relation to all sports, is not making the grade. And once we have a reference, that's what I can provide through the means of tennis, we can actually use it as like a freezing point, boiling point for understanding, a foundation, again, in relation to developing a sound mind, and then opposed to an unsound mind and an unsound body, and the idea of how that is pathetic. And, but, yeah, I'm sorry, I have to kind of turn the light on this, but I'm hoping that eventually people kind of have the ability to turn away from being pathetic and recognize the nature of that. And we'll see if possibly that that's going to come to a fruition type of situation. But I'm seeing that the nature of this world right now is that it's becoming more and more pathetic, and something has to be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item D8, donation requests, acceptance of donations.
I move to accept with gratitude.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Consent calendar, any items to be removed? Ms. Limone?
I don't actually want to remove any items, but I do want to make a note that there's several contracts with the city, and most of those are ratifications. But because we got blank sheet, well, we only saw the signatures on behalf of the district, Nancy Rap has retired from the city, and I just noticed that she was the signature on one of those. So I just wanted to note that and thank Nancy Rap for her years of service to Santa Barbara. But there's several there that I wanted to note. And it may not matter, because it's a ratification at this point, so.
You just reminded me when you said ratification. I noticed, again, there's a couple items for us to ratify trips that already took place. And I know it's not a big deal, but it was a big deal back in 2010 or '11 in that timeframe, when we really want, I mean, the rules say if you want to be reimbursed, you do it and get our approval first. And I know that there's been a delay between our last meeting and this meeting, but these were items that could have been done before our last meeting. And before it gets out of hand, I'd like to just remind everybody that there are policies and procedures that we want followed, I think we should have followed. And I know you're doing your best to do that, but there were a couple more ratifications that was one last time. So just a reminder to staff to do it per the bylaws. There is a change on E7, the minutes. One change related to comments by me under item nine of the minutes. And thank you for making those changes. I appreciate it. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar with the revised revisions to the minutes from the July 7, 2015 meeting under item E7. I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? There is no public hearing. We'll go to the action items, action agenda. G1, Board Action on Petition for Readmission of an Expelled Student, Education Case Number Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved?
Don't all speak at once. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carried. If we have, want to move faster, we need to make motions faster. Approval of Pre-Intern Permit for Deaf Hard of Hearing, G2. Dr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Herron. Mr. Torena?
Good evening, Board. The background on this petition is the Commission on Teacher Crudentialing, the CTC, permits districts to credential teachers using a pre-intern permit, PIP. The PIP allows an employee agency to fill an immediate staffing need by hiring an individual who has not yet met the subject matter competence requirement needed for, to enter an intern program. We have had the position advertised, and no one has applied for the position. The Board is required to approve the agreement to employ using a pre-intern permit as an action item before the CTC acts at one of their regularly scheduled meetings. The district requests the Board approve the following pre-intern permit, Deaf Hard of Hearing. We are confident the candidate for this position will compete, complete her credentials requirements. We also want to note that Alicia Ponse has been hired as a Deaf Hard of Hearing teacher. She is a graduate of San Marcos High School and benefited from our own DHOH program. She currently holds a BA degree in English from CSUN. She worked as a DHOH teacher during the 2014-15 school year on a short-term staff permit. She is currently enrolled in the DHOH program at CSUN and has one course to complete prior to being issued her intern credential in December.
Discussions? Dr. Paz?
This is sort of an exceptional case in the sense that there's not a lot of teachers who fit this category. How much support does this teacher or going to have moving forward? Because sort of an unusual position, not necessarily that many in our district.
She has plenty of support. She actually has two interpreters who work with her currently.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the pre-intern permit for the Deaf Hard of Hearing.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Number G3, Approval of New Classified Job Description, Aquatic Activities Coordinator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herron. If Board members will recall, approximately a year and a half ago, our district undertook a fairly exhaustive process on examining our aquatic center safety procedures, protocols, and facilities. And I've been meeting consistently with what we're calling our Pool Safety Committee, which consists of representatives from all three high schools, representatives from facilities, and from the business office. And one of the items that came out of that conversation, along with a number of other items that you'll be seeing later, was the need to have someone who could help really with the aquatics teachers. Unless you happen to have a grandson that's in one of our high school aquatics programs, it's hard to really understand the amount of time that's required by our aquatic staff or teachers in maintaining and facilitating the use of those pools. It's, as described to me in listening in the committee, sometimes it felt like they were saying they were working essentially 24 hours a day, seven days a week kind of deal, with some really specifically busy times during tournaments. One of the really neat things that you should all be aware of is that there's a really neat sense of camaraderie amongst our aquatics coaches, and about how they work together. If one coach is holding a clinic or a tournament, how the other coaches work with that coach in any way that they can to ensure that it runs as smoothly as possible, including, you know, loaning equipment, use of their own pool facility. So, which is a really good thing to, and I just, that was just an observation I had in meeting with them regularly over the last 18 months. So this position is before you. It's a new, brand-new position. It's a position that, something like it does exist in other school districts. The, I'm going to go ahead and comment on it, since I can see Mr. Herron is circling the range on it, that there was a long conversation about what, where we wanted to place this on the classified salary schedule in order to ensure we'd get the kind of candidates who would be qualified to really fill the position. So I'm sorry, Mr. Torena, but I felt I could give some background on that. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time.
Questions? I had one question that stuck out at me. The fifth bullet under essential functions, perform light and routine custodial duties to maintain pool or locker areas in safe, clean, and hygienic condition. I mean, is that being a janitor?
Well, yeah, our aquatics coaches currently are. We're talking about picking up trash, wiping down equipment, that sort of thing, which is essentially we would need to put in there.
Okay, but does that take away duties of other people who do those things?
No, no. Currently, it's, other people are doing them, which is our coaches.
Does that go into the locker areas and?
Yes, everywhere.
Bathroom areas?
Uh-huh, yep.
And our coaches?
Yep.
Clean the bathrooms?
Well, I mean, if we don't have a custodian, and they're working on a Saturday, and they have a water pole tournament going on, yeah, you bet they pitch in. Absolutely.
And this would be for each pool site?
Yes, three.
With three high schools?
Right.
Ms. Parker?
I have a question about one of the further down bullets, where it says act as a lifeguard if properly trained and certified. In what context, what times would we ask them to act as a lifeguard?
When there's no other lifeguard present.
So it'd be like act as a substitute lifeguard?
Well, there's, yeah, I guess that's a good way to look at it, yeah.
Okay, just to, I don't think that we need to change the language on the description, just for personal clarification.
Yeah, that's probably a good way to look at it.
Dr. Paz?
So is there, so is the 5.5 hours the minimum, the amount of work that they'd be working on a particular day, and up to eight hours?
No, it'll be a regular, as the assignment says. So some days, you know, they could come in at four in the afternoon and work till midnight. Some days they come in at noon. Some days they wouldn't work all week in order to work all day Saturday and all day Sunday.
Would depend on whatever is happening.
Right. It's one of those things that will be, you know, schedules will be mutually determined by the aquatics coach, the athletic director, and the administrator in charge of athletics.
Ms. Parker?
So when it says reports to an assigned supervisor, would that be the AD or would that be an assistant principal?
It'll be an assistant principal, but the AD will be the person who will coordinate their work, along with the aquatics coach.
Do I have a motion to approve the classified job description?
I'll make the motion, approval of the new classified job description for an aquatic activities coordinator.
Second. Second by Dr. Paz. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. G4, Approval of Resolution 2015-16-03, approving the tax rule for the Santa Barbara Unified School District for Measure A 2012 Parcel Tax 2015-16.
We have Mr. Tedeschi here for both the next two items.
Okay, well, back here again, as we were last year. We just completed the process of compiling the big list of parcels that we sent to the county of Santa Barbara, the Auditor's Office, of which goes on the tax bills that charges the parcel taxes to the citizens of the area. Part of this process is removing all of the senior exemptions from those lists of parcels so that they aren't billed for the parcel tax, as per the parcel tax language. This first resolution in front of you is for Measure A, which consists of all of the parcels that make up what used to be the Santa Barbara High School District. And for this taxing purposes, it's still defined the same way that it was before the unification. In the Measure A High School District, we ended up having 48,638 taxable parcels. And for Measure A, we had 709 senior exemptions that we processed.
How does that compare to previous years?
The last year, it's more. We had 603 last year in Measure A. Total, between Measure A and B, we had 151 more senior exemptions this year than last year. So we, per the Auditor, Controller, and Government Code guidelines, we ask you to pass this resolution, allowing them to put our parcel tax on the tax bills of the citizens of Santa Barbara County that live in our high school district. So I'll take any questions?
Well, I guess I have one question. Last year, we had a problem in this process. Has that been corrected for this year?
Yes. That was a data issue where certain seniors got charged that shouldn't have been charged. And as soon as we found out, we sent out a bunch of refund checks and apology letters. And I double-checked to make sure that wouldn't happen this year.
Thank you.
But thanks for reminding me.
Discussions or motion? Dr. Paz moves to approve Resolution 2015-16-03.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. G5, can you give us the numbers on that?
Sure. For our Santa Barbara Elementary School District parcels, we had 22,803 taxable parcels. And by taxable parcels, I mean parcels that have an assessed value, that are not government-owned or church-owned, and they have to have a taxable value. So from those 22,803, prior to that, we took out 408 senior exemptions. And the year before, we had 363 in the elementary district for an increase. So the total number of senior exemptions was 1,117.
May I ask? I assume that most of those are duplicates where people who have done one in one district do it.
Yes, yeah. Almost, well, basically, all of them. We kind of remind people when they come in with just the Measure B, that, you know, they're also eligible for Measure A, you know, or they come and ask for the forms. But yeah, pretty much everybody who lives in the elementary school district also qualifies for the high school district parcel tax.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015/16-04?
I'll make the motion to approve the Resolution 2015, or slash 16-04.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Let's go to the conference agenda. H1, Family, Community, School Partnership: A Framework for Family Engagement.
I'd like to ask Dr. Raul Ramirez to come forward and present this item.
Hi, good evening, Board. For President, Mr. Herron, thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm actually I'm actually presenting, so that's, as you all know, I've transitioned out of my previous role as Director of EL and Parent Engagement Programs, but in, in that process, we engaged in, in the work of trying to begin to develop a framework for how we would begin to move forward as a district in a more coherent way, in terms of engaging our, our parents and our, and families in supporting us in student learning. And Dr. Mora, who is, who is now in that position, she was not able to attend today. She will be carrying this, this important work forward. She's been part of this, this work already, but she is up in Sacramento with federal program review, which I'll, I'll be joining in tomorrow. So, with that said, even before beginning, you've had the opportunity to, to review these documents, but I wanted to just make a couple of points. First is that this is only a beginning for us as a district. As I mentioned just previously, it's, it's an initial attempt to engage in, in this discussion, which, which now is, is taking on even a more important and more prominent place in our district. And what you see, and what we'll be discussing today, is not at all a finished draft or final draft, merely a beginning and a framework for how to begin to engage in that process. We are looking to build this out, not only over this coming year, but moving forward, and establishing a really, a living document of sorts that will allow us to continue to evaluate, reevaluate how we partner with our, with our, with our parents and families. So with that said, I just wanted to provide you a little bit of context on what went into this, this document and then this initial draft. As you know, we have a state adopted standards that have, that have really sent a ripple across our system in terms of how we deal with and how we begin to address as a system, and in terms of our partnerships with our, with our community and families on, on the rigor, the expectations for, for our state standards. So with that in mind, we also wanted to keep that as part of the context for how we, how we establish those partnerships and how we establish those, those, those systems. The, the state put out a framework a few years back, I believe it's 2011 or 2012, an initial draft of a framework, parent engagement framework, which has since been revised, which we used really as the underpinning for this, for this framework. Very productive, very progressive, very robust. It has a number of rubrics that we're still trying to figure out how they can be put forward in a more user-friendly way, but it's, but it's very, it's very explicit, and it's very much aligned to the work that we're doing here. On a local context, we, we know that this is a big priority as part of our LCAP, is parent involvement and engagement, and we're not using those, those terms interchangeably. They are different, and we will try to define those more, more clearly as we move forward. But we know that we need both. We need our parents involved in our schools and in our school district if there is going to be engagement. So we see those as maybe points in a continuum as opposed to defined unto themselves. And also, locally, a lot of work has been put into the community of schools over the last few years. Formerly, the Westside Project, and my colleagues, Dr. Guillermo Juan and Dr. Badrigal, have played critical roles in, in having an understanding, both from the practical work that has already been done, and the history of parent involvement and engagement in our district, as well as an eye forward on how to evaluate our effectiveness and how to evaluate the work that we do. And really ultimately, we know that it comes down to the site level, because that is the biggest and most frequent and most important point of contact for our parents, for our families. It's, how does that partnership between us as a school or a school district impact and begin to, in, to have a, have an impact on student achievement? With all the while trying to establish authentic parent engagement opportunities, we, we understand that that is a critical aspiration for us, to turn every encounter that we have at every level into something that, that is authentic, well-intentioned, and, and in keeping with the, the capital that our parents and families bring to us every day. So here, just the components of, a few components of the framework. We have kind of overarching program dimensions, as you can see in the document, and we have specific action areas where most of, most of the, the practices have been captured. And we have some guiding district principles. Now, these district principles are largely adapted and taken from the CDE framework, but I think they, they fit very well and align very well with what, what's been established through our strategic plan and through our LCAP. So we feel very, very confident that, that there is a significant alignment between what the, what the, what the state has put out and what we, I think, the values that we hold as, as a district. From there, we also wanted, and we understand that there isn't a, nor will there be a causality between parent involvement and engagement and student outcomes. We want to be very clear about that. But we do want to inform our, and be very intentional about the practices that we engage in as a means of supporting and, and really impacting, in as much as we can, student outcomes, and you'll see at every grade span. I think it's important to, to be very clear that the, the needs of a child are different at every point, as well as for parents. And now we're hoping that as we move forward, we will see that as parents transition from one age span to the next, the work, the connectedness, the, the experiences, the positive experiences that they have at a particular grade span can help inform the next. That is, that is really our long-term view. But as we, as we roll this out, we want it to be very clear that, that we're being very mindful of the fact that there are significant differences, and therefore, it, the response and the, the approach has to be differentiated. And finally, we wanted to begin to also talk about what are parent goals? What are parent goals that we can reasonably expect? And, and this is, again, our first attempt. These will be very much informed and driven by the work that we, that we engage in over the next year, to start to bring together something that's more robust and more, and So I just wanted to take a moment and kind of move out of this and just discuss the framework itself for a little bit. This, in this, in this first, in this first page, what, what we tried to, to do is capture some of the major elements of the, the state's framework. And, and again, there, the district principles, as well as those action areas that we, that we later defined. So, as we have, have really had conversations around, around our LCAP and what we want, and really our strategic plan, our district, district strategic plan, one of the things that we, that we wanted to do was begin to, to identify what, what we hope will inform all of our practices, which is the goal of establishing a live career in college-ready students. So these are, these are outcomes that, that we've, we've really begun to, to formulate as a way of really ensuring that, that our work is really aligned and always informed by what we would want to see as, as outcomes, once students are ready to leave our district and enter into, into either higher ed or the workplace. So we wanted to make sure that, that that was, that was always at the forefront. What you see beneath that is then the grade spans, and we wanted to incorporate early childhood into this. We, we understand that we're placing a great deal of emphasis into our early childhood programs and partnerships. Now, we have our kindergarten readiness network, which is, which is really, is emerging as a, as a really productive way to engage our partners and the community around early childhood and preschool programs. But we know that we only have a, a certain measure of, of influence over our preschools, so we wanted to, to, to ensure that, that we were really looking at our system first. And, and so you see, in more maybe exact or precise goals, some of the, some of the beginnings of what we want to see. And this was largely taken from the community of schools project, which is, which is still ongoing. And if you look at early childhood, one of our, one of our real outcomes of that grades, of that age span is to achieve kindergarten readiness. And we have some metrics that can inform there, and we're hoping, as part of our assessment continuum, to be, build that out in a more robust way. In our elementary, we've all heard and seen the research around literacy and the importance of establishing strong literacy skills, particularly by grade three. That, that's a very pivotal year. It just happens to coincide with, with the new beginning points for standardized testing. But really, this is more about what the research tells us about, about literacy and how it informs a future for, for a student. And at the junior high level, again, in keeping, we want to make sure that we're, and some of this language will shift, but really meeting or exceeding state-adopted standards. And I know that there's going to be new measures for, for how that can, can be and how that, how that should take place, but that's, that's a starting point. By the, by the high school, we have a number of other outcomes that we would, we would like to see really for, for all our students. And, and a lot of them are really geared toward ensuring that they have viable opportunities and viable plans moving forward once they leave the district. So, so again, that is the context, that's what we want to align to, and we want to ensure that all the work that we do really is pointed in that direction. Once you start filtering down, we start to look at some parent goals. And those are differentiated, there are some commonalities and some themes, but there's really an attempt, at least an initial attempt, to differentiate them by, by grade span. You'll see college and career readiness starting as early as elementary, because we understand that there, we can't wait until the secondary to, to, to start to establish not only that conversation with students, but really that preparedness. And, and another big, big piece of that is shared leadership. This notion that, that, this understanding that parents play a vital role in informing our work in establishing the kind of environment at school sites and as a district where, where there's going to be success, and when they're going to feel really empowered to, to be able to, to have a stake in, in what's going on in classrooms and at the school. And that really begins to kind of focus or blend its way through with some differentiation across each, each, each grade span. One important component that I wanted to just point out is that accessing and navigating community and educational systems. And what you'll see here is also an attempt to, to really address, and, and this, this process really informed by our work around cultural proficiency. Different families and parents have different needs, and this is an acknowledgement of just that. Our parents come to us with a differing understanding of what the school system is attempting to achieve, and, and the more that we can keep that at the forefront, the better off we'll be in terms of avoiding a, just a generic approach to, to, to how we engage our parents. Once you build down, you have a building capacity, and, and there specifically, we, we listed out, this was also an attempt for us to, in many ways, inventory the kind of partnerships that we have that have been very successful over time, and that have yielded a lot of, or at least anecdotally, if not even with use of some, some survey data, would, would give us an impression that, that they're helping in, in empowering parents with knowledge of how to navigate the system, of how to access resources within our district and even externally in the community. So there are a number of different partnerships that school sites or even us as a district have engaged in, and we, we see the value in maintaining those and fostering those as, as we learn more about what our system can do, is equipped to do, and can, and how we develop our internal capacity to either meet those needs or just better provide more robust and productive partnerships. Professional learning, that's, that's left more or less open-ended at this point, because we're, we're going to be letting data and, and kind of this process inform the kind of work that we need to do. We have a sense of it in terms of how we should be developing as professionals and leaders at all levels, but we, we're still, I think we have a lot to, to learn yet about what that process really looks like in a more formative way, and in a more formal way. Demonstrating leadership, we have a number of committees. You, you, earlier in the, in the meeting, we, we mentioned the D-LAC and the, the site level ELACs, just as an example, but we have, we have a number of district committees that have been instrumental to providing us important and valuable feedback that are very much driven by parent leaders, leaders of, parent leaders that are, that are leaders in the community, leaders at school sites, and at all levels, and at every age span group. So we recognize that those, that those committees need to be developed further with a more intentional approach, and, and we just, there also addressed a few kind of examples of how that, how that can play out. But we do understand also that, that our structures, whether it's LCAP or single plans, really need to be where all of these plans are fully and more robustly articulated. And again, coming back to that intentionality and that approach to really put resources, goals, plans, and programs in, in a way that, that really puts it out there for our school community and our district community. Again, with the fiscal resources, it goes back to that point as well. We know that our resources need to be steered in that direction, but that it's not just a matter of, of aligning resources, it's what we do and what kind of goals we want. So this was our, our initial attempt to start to really provide a, a guide, a way of providing some information for our sites to make more informed and purposeful decisions around those, use of those funds. And then we have a number of different, both parent and student indicators. Some of these are already very much within our system, and others are ones that are, that are going to be built out, including the evaluation of our own efforts through pre- and post-surveys that are, that are more coherent across our district, rather than than just that, that happenstance or randomized approach, whatever a site may be interested in, in, in seeing what those, what those programs or approaches are yielding. And then finally, one, one last component of this is, is the access and equity. And this, this, this really informs two plans. It's informed by our cultural proficiency work, again, and, and in the future, we'll be discussing that more, more, in a more informed way. But previously, we've, we've talked about language access, and I've presented to you around language access and all that we're doing to remove language barriers for, for our parents. And I feel very proud of the work that we've done, but we also recognize that there's more work yet to be done. And, and so this, this process is really about implementing those, those guidelines and having them work in tandem so that there, these aren't disparate plans that are operating So, so again, in terms of a, of a, of a plan of action here, or in terms of the framework, again, just to review, it is, it is an attempt to, to look at outcomes differentiated by grade span, and also, not just for students, but for parents, and really built around these five major action areas. Building capacity, demonstrating leadership, fiscal resources, monitoring progress, and measuring impact, as well as the access and equity component. And then, in terms of a plan of action, this is just our initial kind of thoughts on this. First and foremost, our, our purpose here is to, to elicit and, and, and have your feedback as a part of this. Again, this is an initial draft, very, I think, solid in terms of how we can, you know, better engage our, our parents and families in this process. So your, your feedback- So your feedback is more than welcome. In fact, we'd appreciate having feedback on this. But it really is a way to begin to inform those practices, particularly as we engage in the process of single plans. It's a way to put things really at the forefront as we look at how we create goals, how we assess programs, and how we align our resources to meet those goals. So we've already had an opportunity to present it in June to our cultural proficiency committee. That was just a very initial look at this. We have a parent engagement subcommittee within that that is hopefully going to provide us ongoing information and feedback. And just at charge, we had a chance to present this also to principals to begin to, or not just principals, but our leadership, to start to get that conversation going in terms of what is this missing, what can be informed? And that's going to be able, this will continue to cycle through our PLTs, elementary and secondary committees, and I'm sorry, learning communities at the leadership level. We also want to build out of this a family engagement committee. And that, the purpose there is to, is to make sure that we have a broad representation of parents that can really give us differing viewpoints and ideas on how to build us out and move forward in a way that is in keeping with our district goals and our really core beliefs. And finally, it's also the development of an evaluation tool. We know that we're going to have to develop the means by which to evaluate whether the programs and the activities and the partnerships that we're engaging in are really productive for our parents and are really giving us the kind of impact that we'd like to see in order to ultimately further student achievement. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you very much. Board? Ms. Limone?
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. That was very helpful. A couple of things, comments and questions. Professional learning, I was really glad to see that professional learning included administration, management, certificated, and classified, just because I thought that to really change a culture and to understand what everyone's role could be in any level of engagement, that was a good thing. So I was glad to see that. And engagement, so engagement is hard to measure, particularly if you're not measuring brainwaves and all that stuff, right? But we know it when we see it. And there's something to be said about knowing when we get emails, knowing when there's a room packed with families, with students, or with parents providing input. And we know that they're engaged. How, I mean, how do you think about measuring engagement? Like, I mean, is this committee going to then define what engagement looks like and feels like? Or are there already some pre-established definitions for the engagement you're looking for?
No, there aren't. I know, much to what you just defined, I think that's where we are as well. I think we know it when we see it, but we want to find a way to be able to have metrics or some way of creating that. And most of what you see here is largely quantitative. So maybe there is an opportunity here for the qualitative approach when we talk about engagement, because it is more than having participation or involvement, which is people being present. But we can't get to engagement if we don't have that maybe as an initial step or an initial part of the continuum. We know we need both. We know we need to create opportunities for parents to be a part of our community. And we've had a lot of internal conversations around that, but we haven't established anything definitive. So that's really an opportunity for both our cultural proficiency work, which is developing and aligning rubrics to help us maybe inform that process, as well as our committee. Because there is, you know, the parent voice has yet to really come through. And we want that, and maybe that's another way in which we can help understand, better understand what engagement really authentically looks like. What we do know is that our parents, like us, also know it when they see it. And going back to that point about authentic opportunities for parents to engage, they know when they're being valued, when they're being respected. But how to capture that in some kind of data is probably going to be our challenge. But that's something that we know we have to get to.
Well, and I appreciate you saying that because I do think some of this is quantitative, but you know, I think of the site, the school site plans and how sometimes I feel like they're checking off boxes, and I don't want this to be a check off the box. I want to be able to see that things have been done, but also feel it. Feel it in our boardroom, feel it in the community that we have engaged parents. I think that that's part of it. So I appreciate, and I don't think it's an easy answer by any means, but I appreciate that. Can you remind me, not the names of the people, but the bodies or entities that are on the cultural proficiency committee? Is that made up of?
That's a pretty far-ranging group. You mean the composition of the actual members? Community members, administrators, counselors from across the different, Ms. Parker is a part of it as well. So we really tried to reach out and cast a wide net when it came to bringing individuals in to provide really a really diverse perspective or set of perspectives. And so that's, again, a starting point in informing our initial work.
Great. And will the family engagement committee follow that model? Will it be?
That's what we're hoping. We're hoping. You know, we wanted to have this process stall a little bit to make sure that it was being informed in earnest through the cultural proficiency committee. Because we understand that this is, that this, it can't be a checkoff item. It has to be about authenticity. And there's no way that we can accomplish that if we don't acknowledge that the cultural lens is one that's very needed when we talk about how we engage with our parents and families. It's part of the reason that we didn't want to have any, at this point, initial thoughts on what the professional learning looked like, because we still, that's something that is still building. I think it's still important, and we haven't necessarily, we really need to engage with our families before having an opportunity to have some solid recommendations on how that should play out.
Great, thank you. And then just as a side note, I'm looking in this direction, we should probably put the cultural proficiency committee, and if there's going to be a board member on the family engagement committee, on the December list, because I think it's important to document how much involvement and committees are. I know sometimes there's a lot that we're doing, but I'd like to have that in minutes and board meetings and show our community, there's all these committees and here's how we're involved. So thank you.
Dr. Paz?
To my fellow board member, Ms. Limone's comment about how to measure, you know, I would suggest one of the things too that needs to be also part of this plan and maybe teased out more is also the level of communication. Because I think embedded within all of this is how we are communicating to our community. Obviously, this is in particular focused on families, but that is the cornerstone of all the work that we do within this district. And oftentimes, we run into stumbling blocks because we're not doing an effective job of communicating. So with that said, one way that you can start to kind of conceptualize how we are engaging our families is to kind of look at it this way. And I'm only doing this to put it out there in terms of an evaluator looking at this. Looking at the first level is awareness. Are families aware of the different programs we have in our school district or different policies or whatever that may be? And the second level is just knowledge gain. They may be aware, but they don't have the knowledge that needs to take place. The third level is behavior. Did they change because of the awareness, the knowledge that they gained? And the last is change in circumstance. And that could be, you know, okay, I was aware, I became knowledgeable, I'm starting to change my behavior, and now I actually want to participate in a committee, I want to participate in a group, I actually want to show up to my child's, you know, back-to-school night, whatever that may be. So now they've actually taken everything, put it into practice. So that's one way you kind of can begin to conceptualize that engagement, how it looks like. And I am more than happy to talk to you and Dr. Dryde in terms of maybe looking at more of that and happy to participate in some other informal conversations, but I thought I'd throw that out there.
Sure, thank you. And to add another complexity to this, we also have to come up with a technological solution for how we warehouse all this information, because we are, we would be essentially tracking adults. And that's not something that our system is well-equipped at this point to be able to do. Our SIS really is about students and tracking students, monitoring students, and being able to deal with or find a data solution for that. And that's becoming a challenge with just as many metrics as we need to establish. But now we'd be looking at adults, and that's a different expectation altogether.
And I'd be happy to, sorry, turned off my mic. Be happy to talk to you about that as well. I'm sure Mr. Rickman would also be a happy participant as well.
Sure.
Ms. Parker?
I just wanted to say thank you because it's, you know, obviously tremendous amount of work has been done on it, and I'm grateful for the state of California to have had such a robust framework available for us to tweak. You know, it still feels very theoretical at this point, but I appreciate that everything is being pulled together in sort of a coherent fashion as we move forward because it's, you know, everybody, I think a lot of individual principals have essentially come up with some things like this framework for their own sites in the past. And where everything falls apart is when you try to put them into action, you know, what actually works, you know, on a day-to-day basis, what works in terms of getting parents engaged. And we're not quite to that level yet. So I'll be really curious to follow this and hopeful, but thank you. I think this was a great start.
Thank you. And it was really a collaborative, and at this point, a lot of eyes have been on it. And we're hoping that it just continues to morph into something and develop into something that is going to be very productive and meaningful and useful, not just for our site administrators and for our staff, but really for us as a community to see, are we really following through with the commitments that we've made through our LCAP? And I feel very confident that this is going to develop into a very, very useful tool. We're already getting some good feedback on it, but thank you.
What are the plans for site plans? When does that process, probably already started, but when do family engagement get involved in that? When do site councils get involved in that?
Well, we're still determining our timeline. I think our initial conversation is that we're going to be looking at a timeline similar to the one that we had last year. But really, the work of establishing plans and goals and outcomes starts, I mean, it already started. It started in the spring. I have a few sites, just to make this point, that kind of changed the script knowing that and held their ELAC elections in the spring, knowing that they would have the summer to plan, to collaborate, to set goals, and to begin to inform. So I think that that process has already really begun for many of our sites. So, but we hope to have something more formal for you here in the near future.
Well, I can tell you that, speaking for me personally, when we see those site plans this year, all this activity, I hope, is shown in them, because historically in the past, I haven't seen that. So I hope there's a big change this year.
That's a tall order, but we will definitely, we've already had a lot of internal conversations around that with our principals, and they are very cognizant of the fact that language access and all of these initiatives that really are aimed at more authentically engaging parents and family are really meaningful. So I think you're going to be very pleasantly surprised by what's included in the plans.
Yeah. You know, as I said this morning, family engagement, I think, means better students. And so this whole-
We believe so too.
This whole process will ultimately be better students, and that's what we're here for. And better parents.
Yes.
I mean, I've seen it in action, and I've seen what these parents do, the Community Academy for sure. I mean, I've been there when the parents have been discussing these things and taking an active role. And I understand there now, the PTA and the ELAC are working together. That has never been the case before. They used to be separate entities, now they're working together.
You'll see that that is a pattern that is repeating itself. We had a conversation around this just earlier today. You were present for at least a good portion of it. And I think that is more becoming the expectation and hopefully the norm for how our parent groups all work together on this.
And I see Adelante sitting here and at their meeting a week ago, two of the staff members went to IEE, and they came back, and they're going to transform that school with what they learned at IEE. I've never seen two people who, two staff members, so totally engaged in creating an atmosphere within their, within their school to implement the IEE concepts and language and just what you're talking about.
Yeah. And that's why the work of the cultural proficiency, the cultural proficiency work, of which IEE is a part of, and our work with Just Communities, it becomes so critical in terms of ensuring that as we move forward, we always have that lens from which to see the landscape and understand that there are different needs for different parents.
It's exciting. There's a lot happening. And it's really all good. Anything else? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Looking forward to the next report.
Thank you.
From Dr. Mora.
Yes.
I think Dr. Ramirez is looking forward to Dr. Mora doing the next report as well, since he has a whole nother job.
I'd like to say the last year's been fantastic. So we appreciate what you've done the last year, and we look forward to great things in your new role with the elementary school teachers. Okay, Dr. Cash, H2.
Yes. As board members are aware, annually, we receive a sun shining from both of our bargaining units, and this is the sun shining for negotiating for the 15, 16-year from our Classified Employees Union. You can scroll down, show the whole thing. There should be another page attached to it.
There it is.
There it is. So there it is.
Wages, health, evaluations. Oh, no, that's the district.
Right. They sunshine, it's on mine. I'm sorry, that's not, Brian can't show it. Article nine wages, article forty, health and welfare benefits.
Yeah, that's up there now. Okay. Any comments? Okay. And how about H3?
That's our sun shining back to the Classified Employees Union. Article nine, article forty from CSEA, and we are proposing to look at evaluations in vacation leave.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. You'll soon see the teachers.
We will now go to H4. We have an audience for this one?
Yes. Well, you have before you, for any comments or direction, both a memorandum of understanding and the facilities use agreement with Adelante Charter School. A lot of work's been done between Adelante Charter School and the Santa Barbara Unified School District in getting to this particular point. We still have a couple of small items to figure out, but basically, what we're looking for now is any comments or questions about the document as it exists or any direction to staff.
There was only one outstanding issue that I was aware of, and I'm not sure if the change that Adelante suggested meets the criteria of the school district, and that's on page two of fourteen on the facilities use agreement. On item number four, pro-rata share charge, can you talk about that one, Dr. Cash?
Well, the pro-rata share is calculated as the ratio of space allocated by the district to the charter school devoted by, divided by the total space owned by the district. I haven't seen any language other than what's before you.
Well, the conflict there is that the current language indicates that the charge for out-of-district students will be double the charge of in-district students. Adelante has suggested that that take place if we become basic aid, because then we have out-of-district students taking advantage of our- out-of-district students taking advantage of our property without getting any compensation. And so the thought was originally that when we were basic aid, that there was a reason for charging double. Adelante has suggested that the language be added.
That's not agreeable to district staff.
And I'd like to know why. And, and I'd like to know, Adelante to
I'd like to hear them first.
Okay.
Thank goodness for technology right here. Good evening. It's a pleasure to see you again. Happy summer. Muvena starves. So in our discussion in preparing the MOU and the FUA, when this issue came up, so at the time when the district was a basic aid district and, and the charter school had students that were out of district, it was an expense to the district. But that's no longer the situation as the district is not in basic aid. The other thing is, for a charter school, we have a responsibility to accept kids whether they're in the district or not in the district. That's written in ed code. So when we have kids, at the charter school, we have the, the, the charge of accepting kids that attend outside of the district. So, so it is just something that came to our attention, and that we were hoping the district would take an opportunity to think about it and have a discussion about changing the language that if the district returns to basic aid, when kids outside of the district would be a cost to the district, that then we would have the double charge for the kids. I want you to know that the process to prepare the MOU and the FUA has been exciting, interesting. It's been a, a pleasure to work with Meg and staff. I wish that she were here so that I could publicly thank her, but it's gone really, really well. I've learned a lot going through the process, and so we are certainly grateful for that. So I think that's really all. That, that's really all.
What's the economic cost of that doubling to the school?
I think for this year, when we looked at it, it's about $10,000.
Well, that's the double cost.
That's the double cost. So it would be $5,000. Also, within the process, we did a revamp of the, the costs that Adelante would pay to the district for services. So I think those costs went up about $15,000 this next year. So Meg was really detailed about going through what services is the district offering to the school, and let's make sure that the district is compensated for those services. And so we've seen a change in services, and it's really a lot better. So thank you for that. Any other questions?
Well, it's a lot better, but it's a lot costlier, too.
Yes, it is.
Maybe Nancy can describe that cost process and what went through to get there.
For the
With Meg.
With Meg.
I think that's Exhibit A, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so last year, the Exhibit A didn't look anything like this. We just took, I think, 1.5% of our revenues and just, and, and the district billed us for it. And here we've just broken it down. And, I mean, like I said, like Juanita said, the district staff did an amazing job of really just pinpointing how much time they spent on Adelante. And we went back and forth with a few items, but this is the agreed-upon costs. And it did, it went up substantially, which told us that we were not paying for all the services that we had been getting, which now is being corrected. If you can go to the bottom of the page. I think it's like $41,000, yeah. So off the top of my head, I don't remember what the difference was, but I know that we're paying about $15,000 more in services.
Mr. Herron?
Ms. Parker?
May I ask, Ms. Dow? The, going back to the inter-district transfers and the pro-rata share there, how many students, do you know that number off the top of their head? How many, what percentage of students are from out of district?
It's about 12 students.
12 students out of 200 and some odd?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was at the meeting when Nancy presented this increase to the Adelante board, and the first impression was, that's a huge increase. And to Nancy's credit, she stood in front of the board and said, it's fair. You know, we didn't pay our share in the past. And in her opinion, this was a six-month process to get to these numbers. And Nancy stood there and said, it's a, it's a fair solution.
Mr. Herron, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Parker.
I, I'm curious to hear the, what the district has to say about why we, they don't want to accept the, the language in, in terms of making it so that it's the same for in inter-district or intra-district into Adelante. But larger picture, one of the things that I'm thinking about in the long run is that as this board is thinking about facilities' needs in the future, everything that we can do to show our inboundeers, taxpayers, and voters, that we do treat students from outside the district a little bit differently. So that when we are, for example, thinking about building facilities in the future, that we're concentrating and we're doing it for students that are within the district, and that we're not asking them to subsidize students that are from outside the district. That's kind of what I'm thinking about long-term. I'd love to be able to point to language in our MOU that said, look, so we, we've always treated, you know, the, the residential voters and taxpayers, we've treated those students a little bit differently than students from outside the district. And, and when we're thinking about facilities' needs, you know, for our own schools, like we wouldn't, for example, build out larger schools than we would need. It would only be for our in-district schools. And I'm thinking about that for the charters as well. So that's, that's kind of running through my head. But, Dr. Cash, I'm curious to hear what, what the district's thoughts are.
Well, that, that, this whole conversation is fine in the context of reauthorization of the charter. This is wrapped into a lot of issues in relationship to procedure and accepting students, processing inter-district transfer students. That should be addressed in a charter reauthorization, not in a MOU. So if they want to increase their enrollment through inter-district transfers because it's at no cost to the district, I think there's a good argument that that's not an accurate assessment. And that's something that I would be more than happy to have a conversation about when we look at the reauthorization of the charter and how the charter school manages its entire enrollment processes in, in district and inter-district.
Ms. Lang?
I have a question. With our other two charter schools, are we moving to a process that will look like this?
Yes.
Okay, so then the plan is to be consistent with
Absolutely.
Our two other charter schools with the fee recovery or reimbursement, as well as the concept of intra-inter district?
Correct. One of the unintended consequences of no differentiation between in-district and inter-district is that when a school is full, the district is required to transport and move the student to an available district school. So, and currently, with another charter, we're experiencing a significant financial cost as a result of that unintended consequence.
Other questions or comments?
I'm very confident we will be able to figure it out.
Mr. Lang?
Hi. Just wanted to add a quick clarification. Actually, I'm, I'm supposed to meet with you, Dr. Cash, on Thursday.
Yeah.
So we can also talk about further, further related to this issue. But for starters, we don't treat inter-district students the same. We have to allow them to enter the charter. But if there's a lottery, we do have a differential treatment of them at that point. And so we should, you should be aware of that, that it's not every, every student is not treated the, the exact same in terms of getting into the school, getting into our school. And then we should be remembered, too, that, that with about 12 inter-district transfers, I think it was, the remaining 230-some come from the district, a large portion of them, we're supporting the local Franklin area as, you know, additional support there. So I think there's lots of things to think about in terms of, you know, you mentioned that if, if a, if a school is full, you have to bus them to another school. We're actually providing a great need for the Franklin district right there with our school. So I think that's another thing to consider when you're thinking about that. But I'm, I'm looking forward to talking to you on Thursday, and just making sure we can finalize these issues if there are any others.
Yeah, I'm, I'm confident we'll be able to.
Nancy, what was the current proposal for the two portables? How much does that be? Is that costing Adelante?
Um, we, our latest bid is $230,000.
And that's coming from Adelante?
Right.
Hmm?
And that will be
No, that's for two portables, not even.
Increased facilities. We'll be paying the rent on, pro-rata share of the rent on those, too, when we fill them up with either district or inter-district transfers.
Thank you.
Okay.
Further questions, any direction for Dr. Cash?
I think move
Well, no, we don't, no, we don't need a motion. This is a
I think we would like, well, at least I would like to, to see us move forward. It sounds like both sides feel that there's, you know, some confidence that we can move forward.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. They're, they're great people.
In a way, it's reasonable.
They're not unreasonable. I don't think we are either.
And I think that since our other two charters aren't at a place here, too, I'm also very interested in learning from this and trying to figure out what does make sense as we move forward with the other charter schools, because I think that that's going to be very fair, or more fair.
Are there any other issues other than that? I brought that one up. Are there others?
Nope.
So that's great negotiations. Get it down to one item. Okay. There's, if you read this, there's an awful lot of, between the lines, almost every page, there's white outs, changes. Congratulations on a great job of negotiation for the entire Adelante team and the district. And as I said, Meg was, has been tremendous. So, thank you.
She's sorry she wasn't here, but she's in MISISSIPPI.
And, Mr. Hat Young, thank you for the work on the portables. I mean, that's going forward, and thank you for your industriousness on that.
And what schools did they come from? Monroe and?
Both coming from Monroe.
Both from Monroe. Okay.
And I just have a quick question about that. Is there a expected length use, length of use for those portables? Is it undefined for, no, not, not like as for the portable themselves, but do you see this, I guess, Adelante as something you need for a long time, or something that you're hoping is just a five-year thing, or?
Back to the, to the mic.
Sorry, back to the microphone. Juanita.
Not like our board being, we just talk from wherever we are.
So we asked the district if we could expand and bring two buildings on the campus because the enrollment is remaining steady. People in the community are really interested in the opportunity for their kids to learn not one, but two languages. And so this next year, we're going to add a fourth grade. So right now, we've had two classes K3. This year, we're going to have a K4. So our family center, our meeting room, where we do lots of things, we've emptied it out. We're turning that into a fourth-grade room. So we know next year, we're going to need a fifth-grade room, and the year after that, a sixth-grade room. So right now, like in fifth grade, there's 36 kids. I know that's becoming a normal number again, but our board would like us to try to keep that student class size down. I know when I was teaching, I was showing the staff my picture today as a first-year teacher. I had 38 first graders, and it wasn't a big deal. So when they're like, oh, I have 24, I'm thinking, oh, if you only knew, it's doable. But, so we're going to try to keep class size low. That's in our charter. So we're not really expanding. You can see the documents have, have us capped at 290, so we won't be going over 290. Just making space for the kids that we do have. You're welcome.
Is that 290 an issue, Dr. Cash?
No. And our goal is to facilitate, to the greatest extent, Adelante's success, both academic and their facilities challenges.
Yes, thank you.
How are the four portables on the, the separate four? How, what are they used for?
They are classrooms. One's a fourth, one's a fifth, and two of them are third-grade classrooms.
So they're all four classrooms now?
Yes, and they're all cleaned up and ready to go for another year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything else, board? Okay. Thank you very much, and good luck in the final negotiations.
Well, aren't you going to say good luck to me?
I said, I said that generically. I didn't say it.
Okay, all right.
I wasn't aiming that at anybody. I said, good, you know, good luck in the final negotiations. Take it as you want. Okay. I can't even find my agenda now with all my papers. Okay, here we go. Number five, First Reading Administrative Regulation Board Policy 3514-1. I believe we have an amended document in front of us.
Yes, you do. And you should also be aware that this, that the genesis of this is from Ms. Parker's inquiry as to the safety of our science labs. And it resulted in fairly comprehensive work by both Dr. Jodi and Mr. Hat Young, and they're both going to present these items to you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Good evening, governing board, and Dr. Herron, Mr. Herron.
Thank you.
We got so used to calling everybody doctor.
If I call enough people doctor, I got them myself.
I bring to you the first reading of BP 3514.1 and AR 351 point, 3514.1 regarding hazardous, hazardous waste, hazardous substances. I'd like to first discuss BP, the BP, and then we'll go to the AR, if you don't mind. I know it's the reverse order, which is here on the agenda. Board Policy 3514.1 is being updated to reflect requirements for chemical hygiene plan as required by, by state regulations for any employer that maintains a workplace where there is laboratory use of hazardous chemicals such as district, such as, such as a district that offers science laboratory classes. The policy also adds, the policy also adds a board philosophy statement that reflects the California Department of Education's Science Safety Handbook for California Public Schools. So I brought with me Mr. Hat Young here, since we'll be working on this project together, should you choose to approve all the recommendations. So we're here to answer any questions that you may have. You'll notice that there's a lot of additions written in green, and a lot of information also struck, struck out as well. So I'll leave it up to, I'll leave it up to you for questions.
Ms. Parker?
When you talk about the statement of philosophy, do you mean the, just the introductory paragraph?
Yes.
There? Okay. I guess my question is, and it's, and it's broader applies, it kind of connects the BP and the AR. I mean, I think of the BP, the 3,000 series as something that's, you know, it's about business and non-instructional operations, essentially.
Yes, yes.
And so I don't necessarily think of that as a place where, where we're talking about student safety. But I appreciate in the BP, the mention of students that, when it's under the, the, the paragraph that used to say hazard communication program, where that's been X-ed out. So it does bring in that employees, students, and others as necessary are fully informed of their properties. And I think that that's really appropriate.
Yeah.
And, and I, I think that's great for the BP. I don't really have any questions on the BP. I think, you know, to me, that looks well-done. Although I do kind of question if it's correct to bring students into, like, the term students into the 3,000 series. The one place that the, that lab safety is mentioned is in the 5,000 series, and that's AR 5142, where there is just one sentence essentially that says a school principal's going to come up with some sort of lab safety plan.
Yes.
And so the AR, the 3514.1, doesn't mention students at all. And so I guess my question is And so I guess my question is, when we get down to the level of like an exhibit, I mean, is it, should it be in the 5,000 series? Or is it appropriate just to keep the, you know, the AR the way it is, or it's really addressing employees? So it's, that's a question.
Yes.
Question.
There is a component of education, educating our teachers in this part here, and that's where, that's what we're making a nexus to students. If the, if staff does not know how to implement safety precautions as they are introducing students to these experiments, then obviously that could harm students, but that's where the nexus occurred. But we can definitely add to...
The 5,000s.
The 5,000s.
Because it makes sense to me. If we're starting here, and I guess one of my questions is, then do we leave that language, that, that piece about students in the BP? Or do we cross that out with the understanding that we'll cross-reference this when it's time to update the, and on, you know, it could be something in the 6,000 series, because we have a whole piece on science instruction in, in the 6,000 series. And I don't know if it should fit there, rather than in just the safety piece that's in the 5,000 series.
Yes.
So I think that this is a great first step, and really extensive, and, you know, and looking at the language in both of them, I really thought that both were excellent, except for my question mark was the long run.
Yes.
What about, you know, specifics of lab safety...
Yes.
...training with students, and making sure that, that teachers were implementing this in connection with students?
Yes.
So I'll be curious to hear in the future if that's 5,000 or 6,000. I trust you guys to think about that.
Yes.
But in the meantime, I think that this is a good first, first start in terms of the employees, and making sure that the employees have training on how to be safe themselves.
Yes.
Can we come back on the consent calendar?
I guess I'm curious to hear what others, or whatever may say. In terms of the students...
Before I respond.
I want to, I'd love to hear what others have to say, but just in terms of the student piece, should the student piece, and is just that word, "students," stay in the hazard communication, the ex-hazard communication paragraph? Should it say that shall ensure that employees, students, and others as necessary are fully informed?
I, I think it just, I don't have a problem with it staying if, if perhaps it was teased out a little more in terms of clarifying that piece a little more, because right now, it, it, the way it stands, I would see Ms. Parker's point, which to me seems like it was just added and not necessarily thought out the way you just expressed it.
Yes.
And I think if you were to reword it and come back in a way that says in the everyday functioning of staff who interact with students, or something like, along those lines, then it makes more sense.
Yes. So, so just for clarification, we can, we can, we can either, we can either keep the language of the students here and add to the 5,000 series, or eliminate, or eliminate this. So I think I'm going to take that back and...
You can all...
Well, what, I mean, I think it's important to note that students are in the prior board policy and AR. They're not, not in there. So they're, they're crossed out with the new language.
Well, yes, and so actually, that's a, that's maybe, that, that last paragraph on the first page, where it says, "Teachers shall instruct students about the importance of proper handling," da-da-da-da.
I see, I see that in your, in the lab safety. I mean, that...
Yes.
I mean, we could put language that says, "Students, teachers shall instruct students, blah, blah, blah pursuant to procedures and protocols adopted as a result or a reference to this board policy and AR in the 5,000 series."
Well, and, and the cross-reference here is to the 6,000s on science instruction, even though, even though the one piece on lab is in the 5,000.
Yes.
So, you know, something to think about, but I almost like the idea, because it's, it's different to say that the superintendent of education shall develop specific measures to ensure the safety of students than specifically calling out that teachers shall instruct students about the importance of proper handling. So I almost want to bring that sentence back in that's been crossed out.
Okay.
Especially since that was there before. And then think about that cross-reference. Should it be under science instruction, or should it be under the, the safety AR in the 5,000 series?
Okay.
But regardless, in the long run, I think what's important to see also is an exhibit tied to either this one or into, in the, in the student section that lays out a timeline of when...
Yes.
...employees are trained and when students are trained.
Yes. Our intent was to first get this approved, and then, and then, once it's approved, we'll start working on, on that exhibit. We'll have to share that with the principals, the teachers, and that's what we, that's what we will present to you, our plan of actually executing this.
Super.
What do we want to do with these two documents?
Can I, I think it's okay to come back on consent, and then we'll just pull it if we feel like it needs some further tweaking.
Yeah.
I have a question on the AR. Can you point me to where on the AR I would be able to find, or the chemical hygiene plan? So it's talked about in both the, yes, but where do I find it? Where do I really find the plan itself? So if I'm someone, I'm reading the AR and the BP, they both mention the chemical hygiene plan, but where do I find the chemical hygiene plan? Is that something that's in the school safety?
Yes, we would have to develop, we would have to develop that...
As an exhibit.
As a part of the exhibit.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Come back on the consent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, First Reading Discussion of Administrative Regulation 4356.1 Travel.
Mr. Torina.
So for the administrative relation, regulation 4356.1, all we're really doing is clearing up the titles and those who would be receiving this mileage rate. We deleted some titles that no longer exist in our district, and we added those that are currently, will be using this, but do not exist in the, in the AR.
I'd be willing to make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. So you don't have to come back. Okay.
He'll be back.
He'll be coming, okay. Coming events, tomorrow morning, we have a couple press conferences. Future agenda items?
I want to also remind Board members that next week, we have our Professional Learning Day at San Marcos High School, and I would be there early in the morning if I was you, if you plan to attend, because Mr. Herron is going to be addressing the entire group. You can hear his speech. But I think it's going to, are you going to be there videotaping? So if you can't make it, it'll be videotaped for viewing.
I better think about that.
I'll be there to listen to your speech.
Yeah. A couple things. We did add to the agenda update, a request from Ms. Limone about the update on solar. I've asked that at the next meeting, Ms. Parker has an item on the agenda regarding the changes in the law regarding alcohol on campuses. And so I've asked it be put on as a conference item, so we can give direction to Dr. Cash to some degree. Do we want him to go forward and bring it back in one way or the other? And so get the general consensus of, of the board in that endeavor, and to hear feedback, hopefully, from the staff at the various schools, how they feel about it. And so that will be on the agenda as a conference item at the, at the next meeting. And I don't know how to, Dr. Cash, if you could just have somebody look into the method of minute-taking that we do. It came to my attention in, where I was, you know, I, it was in the minutes, not exactly what I had said. And I've heard time and time again that really minutes, especially now that we video every meeting, that to try to paraphrase what each one of us says, or our speakers say, or our guests say, or our staff says, I mean, isn't it, is it better to treat minutes as action taken? And if people want further information, to watch the video.
I would agree.
And then you hear it firsthand.
I think there's been an attempt to try to move toward that, as, as opposed to what in the past it was more descriptive.
Yeah, and I've even commented that I like it the way it is, but it's even, it's even come now where the video is there, and I would rather say to somebody, "If you really want to know what took place, watch the video. Don't rely on what the, what the minutes say." Because we can't read every word of every minutes to, to see if we were quoted correctly every single time, or if the, if the public was quoted every single time correctly. So I'd like you to at least think about that, and if you have any suggestions or ideas or legality of what's necessary.
Will do.
It just seems it might be an easier way to do it, and it might be a better way to do it. Dr. Paz?
This is a future agenda item. I'd like to see if we can get a report on how our summer school, say, lunch food program went? The one that took place in various areas?
In the community?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I just got reminded of that, because I went last week, I was at Oak Park, and I saw that they were doing, and there were quite a few people there, and I was like, "I wonder how we're doing?"
Yeah, well, we can report back how many meals we serve to how many people.
Ms. Limone?
And on your comment about minutes, if I recall correctly, we just voted that our committees would have action item minutes only. So we're already, if I recall correctly, doing that...
That's correct.
...as a practice for any committees we're on, so it's just a matter of the board meeting.
Yeah. I was happy to hear on the radio Nancy Weiss is going to start serving food at Notre Dame. So another, another service by our food committee, keeping our staff employed. That's great. Okay, anything else? My goodness, 8:15. Shall we stick around for a little bit more?
You're hired.